Call to order the Village of Riverside Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting for Wednesday, June 22, 2022. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Marhol?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Commissioner Henigan?
Here.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Here.
Chairperson Mateo?
I'm here.
Okay, we have two absences, Chairperson Brahm and Commissioner Brahm, and sorry about that, and then Commissioner Matthews, thank you.
We have a quorum. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting of May 25, 2022?
So moved.
I'll second.
I sent some edits to Ms. Monroe, they were just clarifying who made some motions and some other type of things. Any other changes? Okay, please call the roll.
Okay. Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Henigan?
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Aye.
And Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Next up, we have Visitors, Petitions, Citizen Request and Communications. Is there anything you want to say before we get to your part of the agenda? Okay. An update from the Village Board? Not sure there is.
No, not at the moment, thank you.
Yes, so we are going to change up the order of the agenda since Mr. Vernick is here, so we'll move to the site plan review under New Business for 3300 South Harlem, Sherwin-Williams.
Okay, well, I will just preface this with the requirement for us to bring forward properties that are here for development in B1 and B2 zoning districts. It's something that you have just recently been experiencing with the site plan review, so it's very similar in review of the general standards of the site plan before you. The use of the property is permitted as a retail use. This is a building that's being cited for a Sherwin-Williams store, the former site of the Bank of America building at 3300 South Harlem. There had not been an indication that it would need any zoning relief when we first reviewed this project, and therefore, it wasn't something that was brought forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission at this time. So, we did do a preliminary zoning review though, and it had met the standards of that zoning review. It was permitted, or I'm sorry, it was approved by the Village Board through the development of a development agreement, and so that site plan that you see before us has nearly all aspects of that has been demonstrated in the approved building plans. So we've had engineering review, building code review, additional zoning review. MWRD and IDOT has also reviewed and approved the plans, and so they're, you know, fairly close to starting construction and demolition of the building, but we needed to bring it to Planning and Zoning Commission to fulfill all responsibilities of the code. So Attorney Mars has probably more clarification here.
Sure, yeah. Just to give you a little more context, and Ashley, you know, did a great job, but this was, this is kind of teed up as the first big project in our business district, and as she said, the Board did enter into a redevelopment agreement with the developer last year, and as part of that RDA process and approval, the Board blessed this preliminary site plan, which was attached as an exhibit to the redevelopment agreement. And as she said, it was based, it was anticipated no zoning relief would be needed, and so the site plan process just wasn't on the radar, and, but we didn't want to leave the box unchecked, and so it's before you today, and so, you know, it's kind of our hope because it's coming to you so late in the process and, you know, staff is, has this process firmly in mind now. We just haven't had a lot of site plans in the past. As you guys know, we've been on the commission a lot, and so staff understands that they need to bring these forward more early in the process in the future. But at this point, given all the types of reviews this has had, and how many agencies and other parties have signed off on it, including the Village, like you said, we don't want to leave the box unchecked, but it's our hope, especially given the Board's blessing of that preliminary plan, that you'll be able to treat this pretty much as more of a formality, but we did want to bring the developer here to be able to answer any questions you had and provide additional information that you might need.
That being said, the Board is not asking us to rubber stamp this, we want to give it the due diligence and go through the site plan review standards. So what questions do you have for Ms. Monroe? What questions do you have for Mr. Vernick?
I had a question about the landscaping. Is the only landscaping proposed that around the perimeter of the tension pond?
So, that's what's identified in the existing landscaping plan. There are some, as the landscaping page notes, some existing shrubs that will remain. There's a fence that is indicated, well, it's not indicated on the landscaping plan, but there is a fence that screens on that north side that would remain, or that likely will remain there. The developer actually would have to answer if there's additional landscaping planned for that east side along Harlem Avenue. It certainly is something that would provide space for landscaping, and so they may be able to address whether there's additional, you know, shrubbery or other things, regardless of whatever is planted, would need to adhere to the village's, you know, landscaping selected and approved landscaping. I can't imagine that there would be, you know, large trees or something like that obstructing vision, but lower level kinds of plantings would be appropriate.
So is it going to be lawn on the east and south side?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
I had a question about the ingress and egress to Burlington. It's just that there were arrows for the ingress and egress into Harlem, but not for onto Burlington, so is that a two-way?
They're actually...
I'm sorry, can you go to the podium?
Hi, my name is Kevin Vernick, I'm MEV Riverside LLC. Excited to have a Sherwin-Williams coming here very soon. There is in the, so the preliminary, there is in the construction set, it's got a, it's showing the arrows, and I think this is just was a preliminary earlier sites, but yes, there is.
And then, sincere, so the existing fences will remain?
The existing, you mean along...
The wood fences, yeah.
Yes, those, well, those will be fixed and stay.
So I don't know what shape they're in there from.
Yeah, they'll be, yeah, yeah, no, I want to make a nice development here, and so they'll be, you know, make it look nice.
Okay. Good. So, and then is the asphalt that is there now, is it going to be totally repaved or just cut out where it's not going to be, and what's there is going to stay and be resealed?
So, we are able to keep a portion of it, but majority of it we're not. So obviously, the new will be new, the other will be make to look new.
Thank you.
Was there, and I applaud the keeping the building on the corner, how you have it that supports the general urban look. Was there ever any consideration to retaining the building and rehabilitating it?
Tried, would have loved to, would have saved me a lot of money, especially in today's environment with construction costs. A basement is a problem for Sherwin-Williams, so we have to be slab on grade, and now it's going to be more prototypical in their design, not looking necessarily look and feel, because it's got to be, it's been tailored to the city code from an exterior standpoint, but the way in which it lays out is their prototype.
Okay, so when you say it's a problem for Sherwin-Williams, it's against their policies?
Exactly, well, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Could you tell us a little bit more about the bio retention area?
Well, we've worked with MWRD to get approvals, and that's a little more above my pay grade in terms of, like, you know, from an engineering standpoint of how that's engineered with MWRD, so I can't fully speak to how it exactly works from the bio retention and what demands are, but with my engineers, we have fully approved by the MWRD for that.
Do you have more to add?
The grading plan, which I did include in the packet, has, it shows six-inch PVC pipes with overflow grates that kind of run down the center of the retention basin, and then there's, you know, there are additional details provided in the plan, but the lot itself, it looks like it has additional storm inlets that would allow for some drainage from the pavement, and then the general grading and the flow along that lot is generally leveled, but it does decrease in grade as you go into that retention area, so both from the property line on the west side and everything kind of coming from the east should all flow towards that natural, you know, non-paved previous area. So, just from a general explanation of the plan that I'm looking at, that's what I'm seeing.
And I can second that from that, from that level.
Okay. There is going to be some water storage, is that right?
It's really a dry basin, it's just there to kind of, a place for it to go and then go out, yeah.
It's the village's policy to provide, for when we have our engineer look at properties, providing at least one inch of overflow storage until that water can dissipate, so they've calculated that amount in this particular area to allow for that water storage.
May I add?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, the entire parking lot is designed according to this plan to drain to that pond and what, Ashley, sorry, I'm not doing titles right now.
Yeah.
That would mean one inch of water over the entire site would end up being stored in that pond, which then allows it to be absorbed by whatever biologicals are in there, and then anything bigger or any volume greater than that would be overflowed to the village and MWRD system.
There's another cross-section of the bio retention area that's included in the packet, because I thought you might have interest in it. It's page 73 of the PDF packet, but it's on the details page, and so it shows that the 12-inch depth of that area is to, you know, planned for draining in 24 to 48 hours, so there shouldn't be any long-standing water sitting in that area. There are plantings shown in the middle of that drainage area, and some other filters that are included with, you know, with the design of that area, so that should help explain at least what's going on underground in that area.
Nice.
Why was this necessitated for this site, the bio retention?
MWRD.
Yeah.
MWRD is...
Then why were they involved?
They're involved in, unfortunately, yeah.
Yeah, any redevelopment over a certain square footage these days triggers MWRD review and approval and these sorts of things.
For commercial properties or any properties?
Commercial, anything non-residential.
Is this in a floodplain?
Anything non-residential requires MWRD review, and I think the number, don't quote me on this, but I think it's one acre.
Okay. Does that sound right? I don't, I don't know.
I could, I could not confirm that, but yes, it's non-residential in this particular area, and I can confirm this, but by looking at another map, but I do not believe it's within a floodplain, it's just standard.
Yeah, it's not in a floodplain.
I know when you worked with staff, the plans evolved over time, developed over time. Was there any discussion of adding solar? Just curious.
Yeah, no.
No, not at this time.
Other questions?
Is there a bike rack? And is that a requirement with our new ordinance?
It's not currently required through our code, that is...
It's coming.
Proposed and coming potentially.
Yeah.
You know, this is an area where it certainly, again, there could be the ability to potentially place something like that, it just depends on the circulation of vehicle traffic, truck delivery, those sorts of things that would need to be considered, and of course, up to the property owners to whether they felt that there's sufficient need for bicycles when their people are buying paint, so I'm not sure. It depends on the volume of paint, right?
They might be just going to look at colors.
Absolutely, it's a day out on the town, we shouldn't eliminate any possibilities here, so, yeah, so there's not, it's not a requirement by the code, but, you know, for discussion at a later time.
Anything else? So, I hope you've had a chance to look at the standards for site plan review, there's also a copy in front of you. So the first one is the arrangement of the structures on the site, so is it compatible with development on adjacent property? And does it respond to existing off-site utilities and service conditions to minimize the demand for additional municipal services, utilities and infrastructure? There's already a development there, so I think that B is taken care of. Any concerns about compatibility with the adjacent property?
No.
No.
The organization of circulation systems to minimize dangerous traffic movements, provide adequate and safe access to the site, separate pedestrian and auto circulation whenever practical, minimize curb cuts. Any concerns there?
No. I think it does that well.
Okay. The off-street parking lots minimize adverse impacts on adjacent properties, promote logical safe parking and interconnection with adjacent parking lots. Thoughts on the parking?
It looks to me like it's well-designed and easy ingress and egress from both sides, reduces the amount of parking that exists now.
The design of landscaping, screening and other improvements to promote and maintain village standards for appearance and development quality, provide harmonious transitions to adjoining lots and developments, create desirable and functional environment for motorists, pedestrians, perhaps bike riders, and occupants of residential dwellings, business owners and employees, screens incompatible uses, minimizes visual impact of the development on adjacent areas, and is using recommended plants from Appendix E of our ordinance. Any thoughts there?
They're maintaining some of the existing vegetation, which is good, because that's just generally sustainable, and then we have the bio retention, which while an MWRD requirement also does add vegetation and green space and stormwater control, and then we also have the fence that adjacent to the, sorry, adjacent, separating this development from the adjacent property owners.
Hollybush might need some extra watering, it likes water. Okay. Site illumination in terms of fixture type and design, location and installation in a manner that minimizes adverse impacts to adjacent properties. We just got this a couple days ago, can you just quickly remind us what type of exterior lighting you're planning?
Yes, we're using the existing lights that are there, hopefully, and then we've got some wall packs on the, on the building.
And they're all shielded?
They all, the cut sheets have gone, already gone to the village.
Yeah, the only thing that we might request, and it's a very small thing, is that as you go to the very back of the property towards that northwest corner, adding just a single light shield on that back light may reduce a little bit of crossover light to the residential property there. We want to, of course, keep the appropriate lighting levels to any use of the property, use of the dumpster, screening and all of that, but that's really the only thing that we might request as the project goes on, but otherwise, all the lighting checks out as far as the photometric plan, which I also included here to show that they've done the study, it's been approved, it's appropriate to our code, so.
Any thoughts on that, Commissioners?
I'm impressed that the developer is reusing the existing lights, and other than Ashley's note about the, that northwest corner, there's a lighting plan in here that indicate, photometric plan, excuse me.
Conformance of the proposed development to the requirements of the zoning ordinance and other applicable codes and ordinances. Went through zoning review, so no variations were needed, adheres to our code.
Correct.
And the relationship of the site plan to adopted village land use policies and plans.
I think it's consistent.
Unappropriate for the B1?
Yes.
Okay. Any final thoughts? Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the site plan?
Motion to approve the site plan is presented with the issue of the light pole shielding being considered as well.
Second?
Second?
Okay, please call the roll.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Aye.
Commissioner Henigan?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Vernick.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is public hearing, PZ 22-05. A public hearing to consider proposed text amendments, which include transit-oriented development code changes and other changes affecting various changes to the Village of Riverside zoning ordinance regulations and site regulations. Affected sections include, may not be limited to, Section 10-3 zoning districts, 10-4 residential districts, 10-5 business districts, 10-6 U standards, 10-7 site development standards, 10-8 off-street parking, 10-9 landscaping and screening, Chapter 12, which includes appendices of the Riverside zoning ordinance, and Title IV, Chapter 3, signs of the village code, of the village code for the Village of Riverside. Petitioner is the Village of Riverside. So, we're going to do things a little bit differently going forward, so we'll have a motion and a second, and then a roll call to both open and close our public hearings. So would somebody like to make a motion to open this one?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Second?
A second.
Oh, please, gotcha. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Aye.
Commissioner Henigan?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. So the public notice was published in the landmark on June 1st and will be marked as an exhibit. The remaining application materials will also be entered as a second exhibit. Is there a motion to accept these exhibits into the record?
Motion to accept the exhibits into the record.
Second?
I'll second, I'll second the motion.
Please call the roll.
I'm writing out who's here. Okay. Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Pelletier?
Aye.
Commissioner Henigan?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Okay.
All righty. Those of you on the first PDF, this is page seven.
Page seven, okay. So, we are, we are inching towards finalizing a couple of our discussions. We held several meetings now, lengthy discussions in-depth about what you feel is appropriate for inclusion and revision in our zoning code, and so the following ordinance is demonstrating the changes that have been requested by the commission as a general agreement of who's been involved in each of these discussions, and so, section, I guess, item six in the memo, starting on page seven and including on page eight, lists a, you know, the examples of exactly which codes have revisions, and they should, they should match up with what's the redline changes in the draft ordinance. So, we offer the insertion of new language with an underline in red and the strikeouts with, you know, for removal of language in the code or replacement of language. So, I guess we will start with the figures being updated in Section 10-4-3 with our residential bulk requirements. I'll just make a note that when we're skipping through all the way up to 10-4, it's because we've already, this body has already recommended changes to the sections we're not talking about today, and anything further that we need to clarify or bring forward will be included in a different ordinance draft for you. So, so changes are started with the figures displayed on page 13 of the PDF packet, it's just a refreshed images of what we have for the bulk of buildings. Figure two measures street yards, figure three measures rear yards, figure four measures side yards, and we need to verify with the consultants just the difference between the figure four and 4A, which is specific to interior side yards, so. Any comments on figures?
I have a comment on figure one.
Okay.
And it relates to the definition in 10-4-3 about the side lot line and the setback plane. It's just an observation that I feel that often there is a, there's a potential for a misunderstanding that the point at which you measure the building setback plane starts on the side lot line and is at the grade at side lot line, the existing grade, not something that's been altered. The figure doesn't, I mean, it has a point that's sort of variously out from where the required side yards are, for an example, a lot of 50 feet wide or 75 feet wide, and that's fine, it's just sort of, it's a little bit vague where that line is, so I don't know if it wouldn't, and I know that a figure is not, my understanding is legally, a figure is not controlling, it's the text itself, but I just wonder if it could, I don't know. It could, it could, there could be a label added, I'm just concerned that when the regulation itself is applied, developers, the owners are very clear in understanding that the measurement starts on the side lot line. That's my comment. And I don't have any issues with the other figures.
Okay. Looks like 4A is meant to refer to townhouses or multifamily developments, so that caption...
Ashley, didn't we determine that we thought maybe the consultant had just accidentally repeated the same?
Yes.
Because the online version has a completely different diagram for 4A.
Yes.
Online version of the code.
What we have is a repeat in the consultant memo, and so we need to just clarify that it, it will be a refreshed image of the figure that we have now, essentially, it's just cleaning it up.
To Commissioner's, to Commissioner Miller's point, Attorney Mars, is there, is a figure a legal document of the code?
Well, it's illustrative of the code, I mean, it's part of the code, so it, it, I agree with Commissioner Miller that we would look to the text first, but, you know, the figures are something that we should be able to rely on, so if they can be further clarified, that's something... So, if they can be further clarified, that's something certainly to take under consideration.
And that's really where I'd rather go, is the figure's a lot easier to, it's much more straightforward than trying to read text and someone tries to reinterpret or take convenient liberties.
So, I'm not sure I completely understood the...
So, if you look at the figure, so what the ordinance requires is that you measure the building setback plane starting at a point on the side lot line.
Okay.
Each lot, no matter how wide the lot is. And then you go up. So, if you look at the figure, if you see that farthest, to farthest to the left or to the right, those lines, they...
Thirty-eight, where it says?
Yes, yeah, where it says thirty-eight. There's no, like, statement as to where it's starting. So, it could be beneficial to say something like lot line or something like that. There is, yeah, well, no, it's this line all the way over to the left. That's where you start, and so, that...
The lot line's right there.
No, that's the required side yard. It's just the required side yard. But you could have a lot that's 15 feet wider than that, and that's where you start the building setback plane. Am I making myself clear? It's not at the required setback.
The figure itself identifies lot width, and so, that would infer to me that the figure that's being shown is saying it's 75 feet wide, and then there are seven and a half feet between the building structure, foundation, and that side lot line.
You're right. And then that line is inaccurate, then, the farthest line, the one that has labeled 38 feet. It should be starting at the edges of the cords of 75-foot, 75-foot lot width. Is that accurate?
That's measuring the height of a building, that 38 feet.
That's, I assume, I believe that's the setback. Or no, it's not the setback plane. That's the 17 and a half one is the setback plane. And the 38-foot is the height of the building.
Correct.
Well, that's problematic, too, isn't it? Isn't the height of the building to the peak of the building? These are showing flat peaked buildings. I know that's what our current, I think that's what our current code shows, but those figures are really hard to read.
I think it's just showing the maximum height of that roof pitch. So, if that's the maximum height of the building, then that would measure at 38 feet. That's that highest pitch of the roof is, which happens to have that flat surface top. It's not the best ideal, most, you know, there's not a lot of properties that have exactly that type of roof construction. However, you know, if were to be angled, it would be interpreted, I believe, in the same way. That, you know, should there not be that flat area in a house, you know, you smash that diagram together, 38 feet is that, the top pitch of the roof there.
Okay, so I guess I take your point that this shows the 50-foot lot width or the 75-foot lot width. But then I would say that where the setback plane is and where the setback plane is shown, the cord that goes, you know, perpendicular there at 17, 17 and a half feet, is actually not on the side lot line. You understand what I mean? That could be misleading to someone?
Well, we would, so, any type of side yard setbacks, I mean, we, we look at a house and property measurements in a way that's saying the minimum side yard required is 10 feet, or 10%, I'm sorry, of the front lot width. So, when you're seeing a 75 as an example, or the 50 as an example below, then that minimum is five feet. If that lot is any wider, say it's 100 feet, then that side yard setback would be 10 feet. And then when you look at, you know, and I believe the rear side, you know, the rear diagrams or the bulk standards should also show that, you know, you look at the lot depth in order to determine that rear yard setback. And as that space gets bigger, then that setback gets bigger.
Right.
You know, so...
So, my comment is just that where the 17.5-foot line is or the 20-foot line is, the vertical lines, it should be clear that those points of measurement are taken on the side lot line. And it would be beneficial to label it as such. If it's not, if it would make the figure too confusing and if the text is clear, yeah.
It says that you measure it from the side lot line.
Right, no, it does say that. It's just that...
Yeah, I turned it...
This is showing it off in some...
I think, I think that the line that you're referring to, there's a, are basically leader lines, right? So, the 38-foot is from a line that extends out from the bottom of the building. That is not necessarily the grade. It's, it's a leader to...
So, if you think everyone who reads it would, it would be clear to them where it is, then I'm not...
I think so.
I was just, I was just suggesting a clarification. But if it's not necessary, then we don't need to do that. I do find that the flat roofs are odd.
I don't think it's an actual picture of a home or a structure. It's a diagram of the planes themselves, which makes it... It's house-like, but it's not a house.
A homeowner might find, I'm sure a builder or architect would have no problem.
Yeah, they're, looks like weird barns.
Okay. Okay. Okay, can we, can we move on to the next one?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, Section 10-5-1 is the purpose and intent of our business district aspect of the code. And so, as we know, the transit-oriented development process and review of our zoning code is to incorporate more transit-supportive opportunities, make things accessible to pedestrians, bicyclists, and transit riders. We had some discussion on the language of this particular section in one of our recent meetings. And this language provided to you in the draft ordinance is, you know, essentially verbatim from that discussion, where it was determined that in 10-5-1A, describing the B1 business district is, "Areas within this district should have access to major streets and provide a safe, accessible, and transit-supportive environment for pedestrians, bicyclists, and transit riders." And then B2 is slightly different. The only change marked here is the addition at the end of the paragraph, kind of describing the business district, is to, it says, "Development shall be carefully controlled to protect neighboring residential properties from impact while at the same time permitting needed revitalization, comma, facilitation of employment generating uses, and the facilitation of resident generating uses that will create additional support and need for public transit." Just kind of wordsmithed. Any questions or other changes to that section?
So, version five that we got from the consultant has a slightly different end of that sentence.
Okay.
So, "while at the same time permitting needed revitalization that supports economic development, boosts transit ridership, and enhances residential density near transit."
So, was that received after the review that we had here?
Yes.
Okay.
It was.
I found that more readable.
Yeah.
And understandable. No offense on the work that we did last time. Do you want me to read it again?
Please.
Okay. "Development shall be carefully controlled to protect neighboring residential properties from impact while at the same time permitted, permitting needed revitalization that supports economic development, boosts transit ridership, and enhances residential density near transit."
Yes, that is, what you read is preferable.
Yep.
We will make the adjustment. Thank you.
I don't know about you, but I didn't find too many differences between version five and version four. So, that's good.
Good, yes, same. Okay. Moving on to Section 5 of the ordinance. This is where we repeat this same sort of intent several times in the updates to Section 10-5-3, specific to B2 central business district sub-districts. So, in our B2 sub-districts, we have the B2 retail core, our B2 mixed-use periphery, and the B2 public use zone. So, the changes that we're proposing create uniformity in how we, how we label those sub-districts, for one. And then the other changes are incorporating these, you know, that we're incorporating the pedestrian-friendly and transit-supportive elements in here. In the B2 retail core, we did change the segment on office uses in the ground floor. I'll read the sentence for you. "Office and residential uses are encouraged above the ground floor, but the village may permit an allowance," which is a change from greater percentage as recommended, "an allowance of office uses on the ground floor, subject to approval as a special use in accordance with Section 10-5-4(c)(4). It's allowing it as a special use. Okay. That, Section B, talks about our mixed-use periphery. And as I said, it adds, when we talk about the retail core, it says, "We also want with safe and convenient access for pedestrians, bicyclists, and transit riders." So, it mirrors other language that we've incorporated in the purpose above.
Can I ask a question of Attorney Mars? If you have currently in a business district an office use on a first floor, and it's re-leased or the building sold or whatever, and a new office comes in, is that a non-conforming use that would be allowed to continue if someone wanted to put a new office in the same space?
Based on the language in...
Or could the village step in at this point and say, "No, we want to disallow that," or "We want to force you to go through a special use process"?
I don't want to jump in, but, we, and I'll allow Attorney Mars to respond as well, but some of the discussion we've been having, right, about office uses on the ground floor and thinking about active versus inactive uses may dictate what type of office use would be permitted. You know, if it's a doctor's office that has a special use going to a very similar doctor's office, then potentially, we wouldn't need to pursue that. I'm just thinking out loud. But if it's a insurance office or a privately-held office that is requesting a ground floor for some reason, then it may need to go through an additional process for approval. I'm just trying to think out loud, and he can disagree if he likes.
Well, it says, in the new language, it says, "to minimize inactive uses." "Section 10-5-9 outlines standards to help meet this end. A special use process shall be used to determine ground floor uses and whether such a use will impact street life." So, if I'm reading this right, I'm sure I'm not nearly as familiar with it as you are. It sounds like if someone wanted to have an office there, it certainly is a new use that they would have to go through, no matter what kind of office it is. And I'm also wondering if, let's say, like, just like with the Sherwin-Williams store, you know, it's another retail, well, it was a bank. Let's say there's a retail use and now it's a new retail use, but a different type of retail. Does that, is that allowed to roll over as a non-conforming use? Or, you understand my question, is it triggered?
I do. I'm going to have to look at that. That's an interesting point. I mean, we do have a control on offices already in terms of the amount of frontage, which doesn't distinguish between different types of office uses. So, we're switching to a different kind of control, and I'd have to look at, like, your non-conforming sections and how it fit together with these new standards and whether that might trigger a special use, because that's an interesting question. So, I'll try to do that while you guys are talking.
Okay.
Other thoughts in this section?
Also, in that same language, I was wondering, the last sentence says, "A special use process shall be used to determine ground floor uses and whether such a use will impact street life." Wondering if that, if that's the right question to be asked? If it should be whether such a use will negatively impact street life? How, or how such a use will negatively, or to weigh, you know, to weigh the impact on street life? Not just whether, like, yes or no. Well, I mean, there probably will be some impact. Someone could always find some impact. Sort of clarify what the special use process would be trying to determine.
I have a comment asking what street life means. Is that something we want?
Well, you know, it's the activity. It's a challenging thing to describe in a zoning code. I see your point here. You know, when I imagine something of that nature, it's talking about, I guess, the level of activity occurring in a downtown area where you have or in a particular neighborhood or area, the number of people out on the street versus going directly to a destination or being vehicle-centric, you know, going there and back. If there's a, you know, general hangout or enjoyment of various places, restaurants, outdoor dining, shops, and other kind of strolling activity or commuting. But certainly, how do you capture all of those things inside of a zoning description? Is that, you know, something we're, we're trying to create and using language that may not be the same for everyone?
It also doesn't say whether it's a negative or positive impact that's to be considered.
We can use a word like enhance or encourage. And rather than street life.
Level of activity.
Activity, non-motorized activity. I would say foot traffic, but that would limit, yeah.
Well, in the second line of that paragraph, there was the term vibrant street life, which is semi-defined, enabling pedestrians, bicyclists. So, it's kind of harking back to vibrant street life.
Actually, that's true.
Well, if there, you know, you might simplify the language there and say, you know, "A special use process shall be used to determine ground floor uses and potential impacts of that use." I mean, that, that way, it does leave it to that special use process to review the good and the bad and weigh those opportunities or negatives from such a use. And that way, the zoning code doesn't necessarily have to indicate what type of activity we're planning on. It's just to say, your special use is determining what that, what that's going to look like based on that process.
Ashley, so the, the 10-5-9 section with the uses is not in this draft. Is that something that is still to come?
Yes.
And is it going to distinguish between active and inactive office-type of uses?
No, I don't thi, I don't think so. Unless it's... No, we, we do in this note specify... Okay, so we specify in the note here, these types of uses.
Right.
But, I mean, the use tables talk about certain types of businesses that are permitted or are a special use or not permitted. So, by what, I guess, so, there are going to be, that the use tables would define, you know, medical office, realty offices, you know, tax preparation businesses. Those types of things are listed in our use tables, so I...
As permitted uses, right?
It, it varies based on whatever the conversation from this group has been, whether we're labeling. I think the great majority of them are permitted uses. But if we're using that as a determination of ground floor uses, then that, that would need to be adjusted if we're looking at these use tables and making changes that would be impacted. use tables and making changes that would be impacted.
Does this paragraph four here really provide any type of regulation? I mean, it seems to me, what I get out of it is that saying that the village would like vibrant street life, which is great, it's kind of already covered in the types of zoning districts, and it refers you to the use tables for the actual listings of what is permitted, what's a special use, what's prohibited. I don't really see what this section is accomplishing in terms of providing any sort of regulation. It's, to me, it might just be confusing things for really, I don't know what the benefit would be.
Right, which I guess is kind of why I'm asking about the use table, because if, you know, office uses in general are designated as permitted uses in the B2, and then we're trying to make some of them special uses by virtue of this note in this section, that's going to be tough. Whereas if the use table is going to say, "These types of office uses are permitted, and these types require a special use in the B1," that would make more sense.
I'm just looking at the draft, which has been, you know, generally reviewed by this group. For example, the B2 sub-districts identify two versions of offices, and one of them, the offices above the ground floor are noted as permitted in the retail core, and then a special use in the mixed-use periphery and our public use zone. I have to double-check when, see which one's stuck and which didn't from after our discussions. But office on the ground floor are listed as special uses in all of these, these things, and refers to the subsection 1062F.
So every office use will have to, every, every ground floor office use will have to be reviewed as a special use?
According to our use tables, yes.
Every new one.
So I agree with Commissioner Hennehan. I'm not sure, I don't necessarily have a problem with this paragraph, but I'm not sure if it's really getting, if it's, again, too wordy to just, you just reference, Table 4 says, you know, sets forth whether or not it's a special use or permitted use to have a ground floor office, and then you have this long note, and it might just be too much, it might not be, you know, too prosy.
So, so that last sentence, though, of this item four, you know, it doesn't need to necessarily have a heading, as it does now, talking about limitations on inactive ground floor uses. It could say just that, according to our use tables, which we would anticipate will get, you know, revised and put before you again for a recommendation, is that the special use process shall be used to determine ground floor uses and whether, you know, and what that impact is. I don't know if that would be palatable, because there's no, then there's none of this prior explanation of what's there or not there.
Right, I think it would be useful, I don't know if this is the right place or not, but to explain, "In a special use analysis, these are the things that will be considered for an office on a ground floor." But then otherwise, to talk about constant foot traffic and then have the long note, I'm not sure if all that's so beneficial.
We've talked about updating our special use process as, after this process goes through, so it's certainly something to note, and if there are changes then to the special use that would impact the code itself, then we could propose a change.
And then this section could simply say, "In this context of an office in a business district, especially the Todd, this is what we're worried, this is, these are the issues we're worried about." Whereas a special use standard would just be sort of generalized into everything, this is how you look at a special use.
What if, what if the PZC were to kind of cut, trim out this 1054 section, and then we'll make it a companion piece when we do do the use table, so that we're not saying, you know, "These types of things are special uses," but then later, when we do the use table, we may do something different, and this has already been approved, you know?
Yeah.
That would work, but actually, I think Commissioner Peltier hit it better at the beginning. It's this last sentence that's a problem, because it really doesn't, it says, "We're going to do some things," but then it doesn't really say what we're, what the goal is. And I think by saying, "It will enhance street life or encourage," that's really what we want to do with this, and that's the whole point of item four. But pulling it out and making it part of that special use table discussion so that we have consistency is also a good idea.
And that, that would give staff a chance to revise that last sentence as well with some of the ideas that you guys have expressed.
Correct. It's really that last sentence that seems to be too vague.
And just a very small point, too, maybe this has already been considered, but if you're going to retain this thing, I would think it'd be better to have it be a subpar, a subparagraph D as opposed to under, I don't know. Everything else is a special allowable uses, they're not special uses, special, and then you get to limitations on inactive ground floor uses. It just seems like maybe it should be in a separate sub-paragraph.
I agree.
And this is under B2, but the proposed use table has ground floor offices in B1, also special uses, so maybe it needs to come out altogether and put somewhere else.
Yeah, that's a good point. Okay. Going to note the time in our meeting. I will, those are really helpful markers when I'm going back for exactly what we talked about. So I will just note for general public, because we glossed over it, we did make just kind of Scribner adjustments to the charts for special allowable commercial uses in the B2 district, as well as residential uses in the B2 district. The charts were missing a pin as the permanent real estate tax number explanation, and then we corrected the street names that are in here. We also removed metal works and craftsmanship from the B2 commercial use and replaced it with craft distillery and other miscellaneous office uses, so to reflect the current use.
Any comments?
Okay. Okay. So in section seven of the ordinance, we are talking about subsections A and C5 in section 10105, which are our bulk requirements in the business, related to the business district. So we, again, note just a general purpose. We've included the sentence, "Bulk requirements also help to create safe and accessible spaces for pedestrians and bicyclists with respect to the public right-of-way." So just a general goal that explains and adds to interpretation. The inclusion here is for section B3E, talks about storefront windows and those displays. So the change here is the addition, in a, where it cut off, have, I'll just read it. "The dominant feature of the street wall at the first-story level shall be clear glass or open elements, including storefront windows, entrances, and openings that provide views into the establishment," and this is our addition, "or storefront window displays. Windows signs standards shall adhere to requirements established in Chapter 3 Signs." Any questions there? So section nine talks about 1056. This is the B1 district building scale and design standards. We had conversation prior about facades, and so this includes now, this first sentence will say, "Facades of buildings, including side facades," we're adding, "and rear facades facing the railroad shall be visually broken into bays to avoid the appearance of large blank walls." So we determined that it was on all four sides, including against the railroad. Okay. Section, or item D, within the same section, talks about public entries and access to transit stops. So we included a couple sentences here. The first sentence is existing. "Public entrances. All buildings shall have a public entrance from the sidewalk along the primary street frontage." And we've added, "This includes sidewalks within the public right-of-way that encompass a bus stop to provide for safe access to transit. Bicycle parking, such as bicycle racks or other methods, shall be provided near the front entrance or in a common area accessible to multiple buildings, including within the public right-of-way if approved by the village." And that's, I'll just add to, within that same section, they add to, "Facades which abut parking areas and contain a public entrance shall make provision for pedestrian walkways." We've added bicycle parking and landscape areas. So, any comments there? In that same section, F, we've added a new section on sustainable design. So this is repeated near, near word for word, I believe, in the B2 section as well, and it reads, "Sustainable design best practices are encouraged, which may include but are not limited to green roofs, infrastructure for electric vehicles and bicycles, solar panels, and permeable pavement. Such design elements shall be reviewed by village staff for compliance with applicable local, state, and federal regulations." Comments or questions? Okay. Section 1057 is related to the B2 district building scale and design standards, so you'll see a lot of very similar content to what we, I just went through. We have also included that facades of large buildings on all four sides, including facades that face the railroad, would be broken visually into bays that prohibit long blank walls. Section C specifies bicycle parking, and this is included within the section on pedestrian access, so that it's relatively common to have bicycle and pedestrian items grouped together. So this works here. This says, "We've added bicycle parking, such as bicycle racks or other methods, shall be provided near the primary or other entrances or in a common area accessible to multiple buildings, including within the public right-of-way with proper coordination and authorization."
I had comments on both of these items. The one on bicycle parking, can we make that consistent with the language for the B1 district?
Yes.
Including within the public right-of-way if approved by the village?
Yes.
Just the last few words there. I also noticed that. And then on the previous one about the facades, we say facades of large buildings, but I don't believe we define what a large building is anywhere, so maybe we should strike the word "large," again, being consistent with the B1 language.
Anybody, everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Actually, to make it more consistent with the previous language, in B1, it says "facades of buildings," and then in the other one, it says "on all four sides." So to be consistent in B1, maybe it should say "on all four sides," or it could be confusing.
Yes.
Well, as it's proposed in B1, if you're not facing the railroad, it would not include the rear facade, right?
I don't know. Is that true? If that's...
Going back.
That was actually...
Yeah.
Right. That, I think...
I believe that's the intent.
So the two should be a little bit different?
Okay.
Do we think?
If they should, if, if that's the intent, I feel like it should be more clear in B1, that it's, that's the, only the rear facade of facing the railroad. Because a facade is a side, so a rear facade is still a facade. Is that correct?
Yes.
So we're saying facades of buildings.
Right, right.
That means all facades, and then we say, "Including side facades and rear facades facing," but really, if we say facades, it means all of them.
Yeah.
So I just think that language can be more clear.
Very likely, you know, when you're looking at facades, you're saying, "Including the side and rear," which would indicate that you also intend that the front is being reviewed as also for the same standard. So I'm, I'm open to whatever language you prefer.
Facade is the face of the building, especially the principal front that looks onto a street or open space. Chiming that in there.
So just, to me, in the B1, the way it's written right now, it was not clear to me that it only applies to rear facades facing the railroad.
So what if it said, "Front and side facades, comma, and rear facades facing the railroad, comma, shall be visually broken?"
Any other comments on these sections?
So there's something in 1057 that didn't make it into tonight's packet, and it's adding to purpose and intent, "Create safe and accessible spaces for pedestrians and bicyclists with respect to the public right-of-way." And we agree on that, so it doesn't have to come back in the next month?
True.
It's much like all the other ones that we've talked about.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, let me see that. You said 1057?
1057A.
Okay, thank you.
Page 45.
Yeah, it's noted as a, as an item here and not included in the ordinance draft, so thank you.
Takes a village.
Okay. All right. So we are talking about at least one of the tables in 1059. This is the Table 6, B2 district bulk requirements. So we've, we've been through a review of the changes to this. It is slightly changing some, the way we talk about how we measure or offer feet instead of stories, for example. So the first change is a minimum building height for principal buildings in feet. That requirement would be 24 feet, as measured in accordance with the definition of building height, so we'd have to refer back to our agreed definition. I do not believe we made a change to that building height definition in, through this The maximum building height for principal buildings in feet, there are several changes here, going from three to four stories or 48 feet, moving from 38 feet as a maximum, which is ever, whichever is lower, as measured in accordance with the definition of building height. It also says, "The height to the peak of a pitched roof shall, only shall not exceed 50 feet." It was prior 45 feet. There's also an additional segment here that says, "Up to five stories or 60 feet, whichever is lower, for special use or planned unit development." We removed the footnote 2 in this, in this section.
I think that last sentence is a bit confusing, to me, anyway, the "up to five stories or 60 feet, whichever is lower, for a special use or planned unit developments." Does that, does that mean that that height could be appro- Does that, does that mean that, that height could be approved as part of a special use or planned development? Versus, if you do a special use or planned development, you automatically can get up to five stories or 60 feet?
Well, I would, I would think that that would be the, the maximum. So it's, if you were proposing a special use or planned development, then you would, you know, if you're proposing five stories or 60 feet, then that would be the measurement by which we would approve. Something beyond that would, you know, not, not apply, unless you're thinking about it differently.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that special use.
I don't...
That doesn't make sense.
Does that mean is, that a, a building, a 60-foot-tall building would be a special
No.
I think it would depend on what type of, what type of use it is. So say, you know, we had, have further discussion to have about, for instance, like assisted living facilities. If there was to be someone proposing the development of a, of an assisted care facility, they could propose a five-story building or 60-foot-high building, and that would require a special use, but not necessarily be a planned unit development request. And so, at, you know...
But what if my special use is just to put an office on the first floor out of a new building, you know? An inactive use on the first floor. Can I then try to claim I can build it up to 60 feet?
I see.
Or if I have a permitted use, can I, am I, is there no way for me to go higher? Where it's okay with a special use?
So the planned unit development idea makes sense because, you know, you're getting public amenities and that kind of stuff. And, and it's very detailed planning, whereas a special use could mean a lot of different things. Even though a PUD is a type of special use, but it's a, one that makes more sense in this context.
Which your example of an assisted living center is a great one, to which this could apply.
I agree, I think I agree with what Attorney Mars is saying. For clarity too, I would think you'd want to switch this and say, "If a planned unit development, then up to five stories or 60 feet." That's not absolutely necessary, but...
I mean, we could call out certain types of special uses, or certain ones, like the assisted living.
I just don't understand why we would be okay with 60 feet for a special use, but not 60 feet for a permitted use. What does the use have to do with the height of the building?
Right.
Right, I agree. I would think it's only for the planned unit developments that this should apply, not special uses.
And special use could apply for variation, if they wanted to be that high.
Exactly.
Or, yeah, permitted or a regular special use.
So are we leaning toward taking out special use?
I would like to.
But it makes sense for PUD, right?
Yes.
And I think there should also be a reference to the definition of building height in this, just as there is for the other two building height, red line, you know, red line language, for the 24-foot-one, the minimum building height, and then the other type of maximum building height.
Well, it says, "In accordance with the definition of building height," so it refers to it.
But then in this, "Up to five stories or 60 feet, whichever is lower," it doesn't say, "Meas- as measured in accordance with the definition of building height." By, by the mission, it seems to maybe be more confusing.
So add the "as measured" language in the second phrase as well? Right after 60 feet.
That seems clearer.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So now we get to talk about yard setbacks. There is a, a good portion of additional language added here in our requirements, or should say, our... Okay. So we are keeping the five-foot maximum front and corner side yard setbacks on Quincy East, south side of Burlington, and portions of Long Common. These are five feet, as indicated on the required yard, yard snap, included as appendix F of the zoning ordinance. We are adding a segment that says, "Up to an additional five feet for a front yard setback may be granted for restaurants that offer outdoor dining, provided the sidewalk maintains adequate space for pedestrians, provided that the additional space, in A, B, C, D, maintains adequate walking and passing space for pedestrians, complies with ADA accessibility standards, is contiguous to the initial five feet of front yard space, and minimizes the path between the restaurant's main entrance and the furthest point of the outdoor dining area. And this says, "To be determined by the Planning and Zoning Commission on a case-by-case basis." I do recognize that the language says, "Is contiguous" when we had prior conversation about it being adjacent to that property. Can I make that change? Okay, thank you.
The Planning Zone and Zoning Commission determination, is that an administrative process, or is it a public hearing?
You know, I would imagine that if they are requesting additional setback from what's in the code, that that's a very, you know, a variation from, from this code. We do have approvals that go through the village board for outdoor dining approvals, so that's administrative, plus, you know, their, the elected body making that determination. So it's up to you as to whether you want to weigh in on that and whether that would be such a thing like a site plan review.
You know, these are pretty defined standards. I think this could be administrative if, if everyone was willing. It's something that staff can, it's important for staff to have standards to weigh something by, so they're able to be objective, but that would eliminate the need for, you know, somebody to come just to try to get that extra few feet to the Plan, P, PCC, if they didn't need anything else.
In version 5, those, the A, B, C, D are moved to 1055. So that really cleans up the table. So it says, "Up to additional five feet for restaurants that offer outdoor dining," semicolon, "C provisions in 1055D." So I think that's something that Todd did after our last discussion, and, yeah, to make the table a little bit cleaner. Are we okay with that? Since it's not in our draft, 1055 is long, bulk requirements, so it's exactly that language, but moved to a different, moved to the text. So do we approve that?
Yes.
Can you read it one more time?
"Up to an additional five feet for a front yard setback may be granted for restaurants that offer outdoor dining, semicolon, C provisions in 1055D." And he deleted, "To be determined by PCC on a case-by-case basis."
Right.
I guess the, the idea of granting, though, suggests that somebody is looking at it and not specifying who. So maybe that's a change for 1055D.
Yeah, it doesn't say who. But didn't we decide that the zoning administrator can decide it? Do we want to add that?
Can we add the word administrator, "May be granted administrator?" Move that for restaurants?
Sure.
So what you're reading is going to replace the red line language here? Is that, I'm a little confused.
It takes out A, B, C, D, and "to be determined by the planning and zoning," and moves A, B, C, D to get out of the table into a tab, yeah, into the text.
To 1055D.
Yep.
Is that right?
Creating D.
Creating a, a new D? Okay. I believe, okay, all right. I'm looking at the wrong section here.
Okay.
Okay.
I get it. Does 1055D use contiguous or adjacent?
Well...
Adjacent.
Okay.
Okay. Is that what we want?
But it doesn't mention ADA yet. You guys wanted it. Should we add ADA?
Yeah, good catch. It has 1, 2, 3.
Yep.
I had some, a couple comments. So this, this would apply if someone comes in, wants to build a new restaurant, and you get an extra five foot if you request it as a setback. Then later on, if that building is no longer a restaurant, obviously that setback will stay there. Okay. That's, I want to make sure that was... And then, as I recall, last time, at the last meeting, we had some discussion of the sub-D, "Minimizes the path between the restaurant's main entrance and the furthest point of the outdoor dining area." I didn't, I think maybe I, maybe someone else did not understand what that meant. I don't understand how, how to visualize this, that the additional space minimizes the path between the restaurant's main entrance and the furthest point. If you only have an extra five feet out, how does that apply? How does it help? I can't remember what was said last time.
Yeah, I'm not sure what that adds.
I mean, how is that a standard that can be met or shown, or...
Well, I suppose I would take it to mean that, you know, that you are creating a dining space that is, you know, near the, the restaurant entry and exit, right? It makes it convenient for any service that's taking place at that restaurant. It makes it convenient for any patrons that are, you know, using that outdoor space and moving between those. You, you are trying to, you know, if you have a dining space that's adjacent to the door, or, I'm sorry, adjacent to the building, but it's all the way down, you know, to the very edge of your space, then I guess that, I would look at that as not minimizing that space between your, you know, it's increasing the, the distance between your dining area.
Like if you have a square like this, and your setback is here, and you want to put it out a little bit farther, and your main entrance is here, would that be saying that people can't have the extra five feet over here because you're not minimizing the space? I, I don't, I'm trying to think of like one of our restaurants right now. The only way to minimize the space, I would think, would be to not have an additional five-foot setback, if it was at the edge of your property. And these lots are not that large, so I don't, I don't know what the intent of that is and if it could be better phrased to be clearer.
Yeah, the phrasing may need to be...
Or maybe we have some legislative history on it.
The phrasing may need to be adjusted. I also don't fully understand what the intent is of that. Hey, you know, I think that the...
And we're only granting an extra five feet. If it was like any kind of space, that would make sense, and it could be an amorphous space, and it could be, but we're dealing with a fairly constricted space.
And, and, and that's just it. You know, the configurations of our, our current, you know, buildings and infrastructure are somewhat limited in, in where those things can take place. And so, you know, I, I think it would naturally probably follow whatever the intent of this is without us specifying that.
Because if someone was to add that extra five feet along the length of their property line, they'd just say, "Oh, well, obviously this minimizes the path because we're not going any farther out than, we're not putting it anywhere other than on our, on our extended five, our setback line," or whatever.
Do we feel like it belongs in here, or no? Or if there's a better explanation of, of that?
Yes. Is there like a, a bad situation that could be created that we're trying to avoid by adding in this language? Otherwise, I'm afraid it's setting up a standard that can't be, can't be met.
Right, if your office doesn't understand the phrase.
Well, well, one thing too, so I guess an example would be our preference for whether the dining area, or maybe it doesn't matter, as long as we're maintaining adequate walking space for pedestrians and has ADA accessibility standards. Something to consider is, what it might be trying to say is that the, I'm not sure about the, the end part of this, about the furthest point of the dining area, but it could be identifying whether the dining area is adjacent to a building or set farther out towards the, the street, for whatever reason, in a, in an enclosed area. In prior community that, that I'd, I'd been part of, they moved all of the outdoor dining facilities to, you know, farther out towards the curb because it maintained a single pathway for ADA accessibility. So someone who has visual impairment isn't navigating between tables, essentially, or dining areas weaving in and out where it's somewhere against the building and somewhere out set, you know, farther away. I, I don't know if it's trying to create uniformity as to the placement of these. You know, I'm, I'm okay with removing it if there's this much question, I suppose.
Thoughts?
I think we should strike it.
Agreed.
Right, I think we should strike it, unless, again, there was something we're trying to get at here, and we want to, we don't want to not get at it. It just...
You know, I think we, we look at things, and my first consideration for having a dining area outside is that there's enough walking space for, for people coming in and out of a building. Sometimes buildings are multiple uses. They may have a restaurant entry and, and in part of the, the building, there could be access to apartments or something, for instance. So just maintaining that there's enough space, I think, is the primary consideration. And then ensuring that, you know, there's, I don't know, that, that's kind of how I would look at it. And then, of course, that it's adjacent, so it's not like spotted, "Here's five feet here, and here's five feet here." These provisions allow for that without D.
So maybe that was why the contiguous was in there to begin with, because you want a cohesive space, not a...
Sure.
But again, given our constraint, I mean, the size of our lots, probably that's just not going to happen. And there would be a site plan review, I assume, and there'd be other reviews to address those kinds of issues.
Yeah. So striking D, anything else?
Okay. On the note, can we take out elderly housing?
Yes. It snuck in there.
Snuck.
Okay. So. There's a footnote, oh, that struck out. Okay, the footnote two is struck out, I see.
Okay. Okay. So section 1062, our use standards, we went through all of this, I believe, at the last meeting. We have added for home occupations, 1062D2, the internet as a listed way to conduct business. Section F, we, for offices, we removed the, the modifier professional from that offices definition. These are pertaining to on the ground floor. And because there's a couple of different strikeouts, I'll just read what it's supposed to read. In the retail core of the B2 district is identified in appendix A of this zoning ordinance, ground floor office uses may be approved as a special use. And upper story offices shall be permitted uses in accordance with section 1054C4. We removed the certain percentages of allowances of, of street frontage that professional uses could, could take up. Now a special use. Any further discussion on that one? Okay. And also in 1062, we talk about restaurants with outdoor dining. We replaced cafe with dining in each of those three bullet points there. 1062H, about townhouse and multiple family residential dwelling units, adds in to number five, H5, about yard areas that we also will include with walkways and patios, ground cover, that would include the use of permeable paving materials. So going for our interest in, in adding to our stormwater management. Okay. Subsection C of 1063, temporary uses, we've amended to, for the Christmas tree sales lots, we have added, Christmas tree sales lots shall be permitted in any non-residential zoning district. Number five in that same section, about house, apartment, garage sales, says house, apartment, garage, and yard sales shall be permitted in any zoning district. Street or sidewalk sales shall be permitted in any non-residential zoning district. So we're refining and defining the difference between sales and residential and commercial districts. Okay. Rental kiosks. So this is in reference to, you know, they, we use the example of types of recreational means of transportation, bikes, kayaks, canoes, those sorts of things are, are intended by this rental kiosk. We are adding those as a permitted temporary use in any zoning district. Any questions about the use changes? Okay. We're tackling accessory structures and uses with this next one, subsection A7D of section 1073. So we first see this when we talk about accessory structures and business districts. We had some discussion about this. There's a lot of, you know, change here or additions here. D says, no accessory structure may encroach into the side or rear setback, and then it gives a list of exceptions. So exceptions include the following, provided they comply with permitted encroachment standards established in table seven, which is 1074. And such exceptions are allowed in any of the B1 and B2 sub-districts unless noted otherwise. So the, the detail here, and I'll open it for your discussion, I'm not going to read all of these, is canopy, drive-through, historically significant accessory structure, permanent outdoor sales or display, except not allowed in a corner side yard. Temporary outdoor sales or display are allowed in the corner side yard. Permanent outdoor seating areas, same, same references to permanent not being allowed in a corner, temporary would be. Permanent outdoor storage for business use is just generally not allowed in a corner side yard. Playground and recreational equipment, also not allowed in a corner side yard. Solar energy systems, also not the corner side yard unless approved as a special use. We kept outdoor swimming pool. Temporary membrane structures, temporary storage tents or canopies, except, again, not in the corner side yards. And 11 is temporary storage containers, which must meet the standards set forth in section 1073O, which has additional guidance.
If we're inclined to recommend creation of the B1TOD, do we want to add that to number two about drive-throughs? So it's B1C and B1TOD? Actually, for both financial institutions and restaurants?
Are drive-throughs permitted in our use table? Do we need to wait to see the use table to determine that one?
That's, that's a question on process. Can we, under presumption, add that now, or do we have to come back and add it?
Tried so hard to leave that, those out of this question.
We can bring it back if that's the cleanest way to do it?
Yeah, so I guess, right, like, trim this one out too? Is that what you're saying? Or, Ashley, how do you imagine these going to the village board? Are we going to ultimately combine them?
I, I feel like we, I mean, we've made recommendations in separate ordinances, and it would be easy to follow whatever the minutes and generally the findings are of those. But I will defer to however we feel is appropriate, the easiest for process as far as codifying or presenting en masse the recommended changes to the board in one ordinance. It's, I don't know what's preferable, there's a lot of change.
Yeah. Do you imagine them all going at once?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess one thing you could do is specify for this, that we would add B1TOD if contingent on the use table, that being what the use table ultimately reflects. That could be your recommendation.
That's a good idea.
It's another thing to keep track of, though. It might be easier just to trim this out. It's up to you.
Or we could leave it as is, and then, depending on how the use table turns out, recommend editing to add TOD.
So that section would be in two ordinances, possibly?
You tell us what we should do.
Well, if you're, well, if you're making recommendations tonight, those will be your findings, right? And so then, you'd have a subsequent recommendation that's kind of altering that original one. It just seems confusing. I, I would either make it contingent or trim this out and bring it back with the use table like we did with the other.
Let's take it out.
You will see this again the next meeting, then.
All right.
Okay. Thanks for bearing with me, trying to make sure that this is, makes sense. Okay. We have some upgrades in our figures for 1073, accessory uses and structures, same, same section. It's cleaning up the pictures and images. Figure 6A is a garage design required. There's also 6B, which is a garage design preferred. The difference being the garage setback to, set to the front or recessed and beyond the, the building facade. Figure seven includes maximum driveway width for residential detached garages. Again, just a cleaner image of this. It also includes the specifics of, of the standards, which we're looking for when reviewing the zoning. The figure eight is maximum driveway width for attached residential garages, same. Figure nine is permitted locations for fences, cleaned up image of that. Figure 10 is screening for mechanical equipment, showing kind of the visual plane of, of what those should look like on a rooftop. Any questions about the figures?
Why are 6A and 6B, why are there, why are the graphics in there twice? It's required and preferred.
I know what you mean, though. The building itself is repeated twice.
Yeah.
I, I think it's just.
Come on.
I think it's just the way that the, maybe it's easiest to repeat what it, what it should look like on a, yeah, we, we can trim that. That makes sense to, to show one example of the property.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
Otherwise, it kind of looks very uniform. It's not very representative.
No.
And then for figure seven, the description, maximum width 10, three-foot flare permitted at curb. We don't do flares now, we do radii.
Correct. Let's adjust that. Both, both figure seven and figure eight would need to include the current radii language.
And then in 6B, is that five foot supposed to be a maximum?
Are we trying to setback the garage?
I think that would be a minimum.
But then it's only preferreds.
I defer to what your, your preference is, you know, it's, it, it's funny, it almost seems to switch between the maximum that a garage can encroach and that required, and then it's almost saying the, you know, yeah, the, the maximum depth that can be set back would be, yeah, I don't.
There's nothing in there about the flare.
Yeah, I would think that it would be at least five feet is what we would want.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. So we're looking for a language that's more like at least or minimum?
Minimum is good.
Minimum is good. Okay. Good improvements there. Still in accessory structures and uses, this is subsections F2, 3, and 4, and subsection N of section 1073. So we're talking about fences and walls. We have made changes in here to be specific to it including residential and business districts in the standards here. It adds to the first sentence, fences and walls in residential districts shall be prohibited in street yards except where the street yard adjoins a non-residential use or along 26th, 31st, or York Road, subject to further review by village staff. We add the sentence, fences and walls in business districts shall be permitted in interior side yards and rear yards, but not allowed in front yards. So that, that mirrors, you know, generally our residential standards. B specifies that, that it's specific to residential districts. C makes it clear that the fences and property, where they're not built at the property line shall be located at least three feet from the side or rear property line, and that standard would apply now to residential and business districts. D talks about our, our properties where a budding or adjacent or shared driveways can be split with a fence. It does specify that it's residential districts. Three in that same section talks about fence and wall height, and so the current passage doesn't specify, this says that all fences and walls in residential districts shall be a maximum height of four feet, kind of at the front of the building, and they can go up to six feet after that first 40 feet of the building frontage. In that section also, 3C is specific to our business districts and adds a little bit more detail. Where a lot within a business district is adjacent to a railroad right-of-way or public alley, has been added. Such fence shall be limited to eight feet in height. This was according to the existing ordinance. We've added, fences and walls in business districts shall have a maximum height of six feet to screen the business and related uses from adjacent properties, particularly residential uses where a fence is required for screening. And then it also adds, when we talk about fence materials and wall materials, we added and business to when we're talking about business, or to the districts, sorry.
Do you remember why is that last sentence in 3C added? Isn't that somewhere else in the code that the fence should be six feet? Like maybe in landscaping or something?
It does mirror our screening requirements, but it's not as specific to, you know, the, the specific zoning district separation. So I think the fences and screening are more specific to saying when you must do that. And this is specifying the height by which they would be.
We say that we need, in that last sentence, we have a required fence, but we don't give it a minimum height.
That's right. I think that's, that made me uncomfortable too, right? Shall be a maximum height, not a.
It seems that if we're going to require screening, then a fence should have a minimum height as well.
And isn't it a six-foot requirement? Not, I mean, I think that's what I was thinking, it should be just six feet, not a maximum of six feet.
Yeah.
So what I have in March is, put, put first new sentence before the original sentence. Figure out specs for berm, but I think we got rid of that. Breakout max heights and screening fencing requirements. I don't know if that meant break it out to another section or, well. That was six, three months ago.
Sorry, I don't remember the detail. Let's see. Let's see.
To your point, Chairperson, I think items for C, we... C only refers to the fence that is screening for railroad right-of-way. And then we add a D, which basically says, and I'll paraphrase, "You have to have a fence screening the business from the residential use." And it's going to be six feet.
So, those are the requirements in the landscaping and screening section of the ordinance where it says you need to have the six-foot fence? That's what we're referencing here?
I think so.
I'm assuming that's true.
It's actually referring to 10-9-7. We talk about buffer yards in business districts. And so, we do say a minimum of six feet in height, some type of visual barrier, a minimum of six feet in height shall be installed, which would either be stone, brick, solid wood decorative fence. I'm looking to see if there's any difference in the other buffer yard. That's specific only to be one district that identifies that. And this is only in cases where they abut a residential district or a single or two-family residential use. So, the... This section that we're reviewing in terms of fencing is... I've lost my document here. We're talking about... When fences and walls are installed, that they would have a height of six feet. So, you're not... You're allowed that eight feet if you abut the railroad or an alley, but otherwise, you know, I think there's a benefit in having a, you know, mid-range kind of typical fencing height for, you know, standard commercial use. Six feet is... Could be the minimum, but then you also don't have this like massive eight-foot fence or a four-foot fence where you can just see right over.
So, I'm... It doesn't seem, if I'm reading this, that subparagraph C really should even be in this paragraph 3, because paragraph 3 references residential fences. And it says, "After the first 40 feet, as measured from the front building line or past the rear of the principal building, a maximum height of six feet is allowed except for the following: swimming pools, tennis court fences, where a lot within a business district is adjacent to a railroad right-of-way." It's totally like not having anything to do with residential... It seems like it's totally out of place. C is totally out of place. And then the additional redlined addition is even more inappropriate, it seems to me.
It seems to be combining too many different requirements.
Yes.
Kind of in the wrong order.
C should be taken out and put somewhere else.
Should... Would a solution be to replace number four with C? So, it's specific to business districts. And then four about the materials would become five, without solve the concern about different types of...
Possibly, yes.
Fencing?
Yeah, I think that would be better.
I think there need to be sort of three classifications of commercial fences or fences in business districts. We've got the adjacent to a railroad right-of-way and public alley, the fences that are required for screening, but we don't have one that's just a general fence within a business district that's not required for screening.
But someone just wants to have...
Someone just wants to have a fence, say, around their outdoor dining area. They want a four-foot fence or something. Would that be okay? So, you would say that it would be allowed up to six feet, I guess?
So, I think that was covered originally in the language right after 3 until we qualified it by saying residential districts.
That's right.
Yeah.
But the main part of 3 never would have applied to a business district. Would it have, having a fence?
Well, failing to have any specificity, we would just say either residential or business that wants a fence, we would have to apply a similar standard unless it's required for the screening, I suppose.
Okay, I guess it makes sense. So, then, yes, maybe that necessitates having a separate paragraph. That applies to business districts, fences in business districts. Maybe repeat all of 3, that main part of 3, in business districts.
So, you mean take out this... The modifier that says in residential districts?
No, I'm saying, just repeat everything. But say, in business districts, in a new paragraph 4, if we're saying that that applies in business districts, that you can have a four-foot fence along your principal building.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. You make one paragraph residential, one paragraph for business.
Yes.
It's easier to follow that way.
And then, maybe you don't have sub A and B for businesses. They don't have tennis courts. Well, assume they won't have tennis courts or swimming pools, but they could be on an alley, or they could be adjacent to residential district.
Is the swim club in E2?
It's 1.
No.
It's R1.
It's R1.
So, we're... We are specifying 3 will stay residentially related and have A and B. And then we would have a repeat of the height or that first kind of descriptor with C for businesses, this new number four, with those separate items brought up, broken out. So, adjacent to the railroad or public alley, the screening. And then four for materials would become number five? Do I have that correct?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I imagined.
Okay.
And do you want a different height for fences just in business districts? Do you want to require the four... They be as low as four feet? Or are you okay with six closer to the front?
Well, we're going to come... Repeat that paragraph.
Right.
About residential. So, it would be maximum four feet for the front 40 feet.
Unless it's the screening qualif...
Right.
Qualifier.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. We've added a section here, too, to temporary membrane structures, storage tents, and canopies. This defines the size of membrane structures and those things. I'll read what's been added. "The footprint of a temporary membrane structure, storage tent, or storage canopy may not exceed 200 square feet for a structure or tent, or 400 square feet for a canopy. For a canopy that's open on all sides, an individual canopy shall have a maximum footprint of 700 square feet. For multiple canopies placed side by side with appropriate fire break clearance, the aggregate area for all canopies shall have a maximum footprint of 700 square feet. Temporary membrane structures do not include tent structures used for commercial purposes." Yes.
Version 5 doesn't have that last sentence.
Okay.
Do we care? I mean, we're working with our version, and that type of discrepancy is fine? I'm asking.
Well...
I think we added that as a result of our conversation, didn't we?
Yes, but I can't remember what the conversation was.
No, I think Ashley and I were talking on the phone. Temporary membrane structures. Yeah, we were trying to distinguish.
I just mean for tracking purposes, does it... Do you want to know when there's something still in version 5 or removed from version 5?
Yeah, you could... It's certainly up for discussion if we want to keep it or not. These are, you know, the consultant's notes on what their interpretation of the conversation was, so whatever you want to keep.
We like that sentence?
Okay.
Okay.
Talking permitted encroachments. So, 10-7-4. We have a table here, table 7. The first, we included it in its entirety just for, you know, awareness and I didn't want to chop everything up to give you just little sections of it. Hot tubs is the first thing that we identify here as in the rear yard. We just added the word provided, so clarification on the explainer there. The next change is related to outdoor fireplaces. We added including fire pits, so there's no change in the encroachments to that label. The other item here, the next one, is permanent outdoor sales and displays. They... I'll note that a lot of the changes for that, for outdoor seating areas and outdoor storage are relatively similar in the descriptions for each of these. We've added that, but noted that in residential districts, it's not permitted to encroach in this front, side, or rear yards for outdoor sales and displays. In business districts, not permitted to encroach in the front yard. Only temporary shall be allowed within the front yard or corner side yards. And then in rear and side yards in business districts, they are allowed to encroach, provided they are located a minimum of five feet from any adjoining side lot line and three feet from any adjoining rear lot. And it also is identical in language that says, "No outdoor sales and displays shall be allowed if the property is adjacent to any residentially zoned properties," and that they would all be subject to village review and approval. The language for outdoor seating areas is generally mirrored. The only difference is talking about weather in the front yard encroachment in business districts. While it's not a permitted encroachment, it says, "Only temporary outdoor seating shall be permitted within a front yard or corner side yard to preserve the ability to move around seating furniture and store away during winter months or inclement weather." So, the standards for maintaining that area are also included in this table. And then the encroachments are permitted in the side and rear yards in business districts with those same setbacks. So, five feet from adjoining lots on the side and three feet from the back. And again, not if they're adjacent to residential properties. And all proposed permanent outdoor seating would be subject to the village's approval and review. And outdoor storage is also the same. Any concerns or changes with those encroachments? Planter boxes?
Oh, I just...
Go ahead.
I was sorry. I'm slow to...
No, it's okay.
I meant one minute. So, in for the note 4...
Okay.
I think it should say in the second line, "Shall be provided with no obstruction to fire safety, traffic signs or devices, pedestrian and wheelchair access." It says, "A continuous pedestrian path of travel of at least four feet in width shall be provided with no obstruction of fire safety, traffic signs or devices." I just... I don't... What can... I don't understand what that... I guess I don't understand what that means. Obstruction of fire safety. And then, traffic signs or devices.
We could change where that fire safety appears in that sentence. You could say, "With no obstruction of traffic signs or devices, pedestrian or wheelchair access, and access to public or private utility meters or related facilities, as well as preserving fire safety standards," or something like that.
You could say, "Fire exits," or something like that.
I think maybe my concern would be addressed if it said, "A continuous pedestrian path of travel of at least four feet in width shall be provided." That does not obstruct fire safety, traffic signs, or something like that. Not with no obstruction of. I think that's what's throwing me off.
I like the change.
So long as it does not...
Something like that, yes. Because those things are so different, you know, wheelchairs and traffic signs. I was having trouble visualizing what was being considered here.
Okay. Thank you for pointing out that we've added footnotes, that conversation with the commission had determined that there was a lot of language inserted in the general code that could be applied to footnote use.
So, I have from March a note saying, "Fix design review approval."
Where is that?
It's at the end of the outdoor storage.
Outdoor storage, outdoor seating, outdoor sales and displays. Don't remember how we were going to fix it, though.
I think it was just in context to who is reviewing it. So, they're also different here, right? So, "Subject to village review and approval," when the outdoor storage is specific to design review approval and what that means to us, which is not one of our procedures. So, we would remove that and go with whatever language as far as, is it a... Is it part of site plan review as applicable? Is it based on the administrative approval of these expanded temporary outdoor dining areas that we said were, you know, reviewed and approved administratively?
What do you prefer? I think administrative would work.
Yeah, I'm just going to throw this as an example. So, you know, if something was, like, the outdoor sales, for example, if, like, Riverside Foods is selling firewood or something in the wintertime, you know, having administrative approval of where on the site that could be situated that meets these other standards would be much easier than, of course, bringing it through the commission in order to approve a temporary, you know, use of 30 square feet, you know?
I would agree with that.
Yes.
I guess I would say I'd hate to leave it as "subject to village review and approval" without any qualifying standards for staff to apply. So, what if we said, "Village review and approval as to location and design," or something like that?
Yeah. I mean, permit, you know, so long as it meets other, you know, whatever applicable standards for setbacks or... Yeah.
But design's kinda subjective, though. Do we care, what, what, what do we most care about here, location?
Yeah, because we wouldn't necessarily have a, a say, you can correct me if I'm in what it is that they have there. But yeah, I would, I would say location is the biggest thing. We, just like the, the outdoor dining location, you know, and, and the specificity we have for that, it shouldn't impede ADA access or pedestrian access.
I guess those almost, those almost imply, those are almost design factors, and you have some of that built into your dining, so what if we said as to location, design, and compliance with code requirements or something like that? Does that work?
I'm okay with it, but this is for them.
You're proposing to replace the references to design review approval with that language?
Yes.
And then also village review and approval?
Yes. And then the planter boxes says appropriate village review and approval.
And there's also
Just for consistency, to take out appropriate.
There's also a reference to village review and approval in footnote six for wider sidewalk, sidewalks wider than five feet.
So using that same language for each of those items, where it mentions approvals by the village or design approvals?
Yep.
Okay.
He said footnote six.
Okay. Yes.
Footnote six, yeah. Okay. So I, I'm a little confused about, maybe this goes beyond what we're discussing now, but why footnote six exists? Because it says it may be permissible, basically if the village approves it, but that would always be the case, right? So why put in a footnote six? If someone wants a wider walkway or sidewalk, of course, they could always ask the village, or of course, if they're proposing a development and they had a wider, they had plans for a wider sidewalk, then that would just be wrapped into the whole development.
Probably because a minimum sidewalk width is generally five feet.
Right, well, it says that in the, in the table, it says five feet, and then there's a footnote that says it can be wider, but isn't that always, I mean, these, these standards can always be changed if you apply to the village for approval? Why call that out?
I think it goes to the trying to encourage the pedestrian environment.
Okay.
The street life issue.
So to like, put it in people's heads
Get it in their heads to encourage it.
This is something you can change?
That's my assumption.
Yeah.
Okay. It, it also, just as a little point, it should say wider than five feet, not larger than five feet in footnote six.
Hey, can we remove appropriate in that sentence too?
Yep.
Okay. We have changes to general provisions of 10-8-1, this is subsection E, and we're talking about parking now. So the general provisions have been revised to say the following. The provisions of this section shall apply as described below. While the primary focus of these provisions relate to car parking, they also apply to the parking or storage of bicycles as required in this chapter to provide for a more bike-friendly and transit-accessible environment. So this is indicative, indicative of all the other changes that, that were made. We, we did not have something that specified a lot of those bicycle parking requirements, and so we've added that here. Part E of this is for, related to the provision of additional spaces, and everything is, you know, the same, but for the addition of, the provision of additional off-street parking spaces shall not adversely impact a safe and accessible environment for pedestrians and bicyclists, including access to transit facilities such as train stations and bus stops. So we are saying here that we're for additional parking, but we wanna continue to keep an environment for all of these other users. It's kind of that complete streets principles. Anything there on the purpose? Okay. Section eight-ten, or 10-8-2 is about computation of parking requirements, and so we have added in the initial paragraph that all off-street parking facilities, this is new, including those specifically dedicated to bicycles, and returning to the existing code, shall be completed before occupancy of the building or structure for which it serves. So we're creating opportunities for additional bike parking. Anything there? Okay. Subsection A of text in 10-8-3 is for construction of off-site parking facilities. This is related to site plan review, and so we have a sentence kind of farther down in the paragraph that will now read, construction, alteration, or addition shall not include maintenance activities such as replacement of landscaping, curb repairs, ceiling, restriping, or placement of surface coarse pavement over previously paved areas, and this is new, or include the conversion of existing car parking spaces into bicycle parking that only requires restriping or addition of bicycle racks. So if there is something that meets our code in all other ways, and they choose to convert existing vehicle spaces, they can put bicycles in that place.
With that site plan review.
That is an exception, yes. That would be considered maintenance. Okay. How, section twenty-one of our ordinances are addressed to subsections B, C, and E of section 10-8-4 for the design of off-street parking spaces. We've added to our pavement types that we encourage, the addition of permeable paving material that would otherwise meet village requirements for construction of parking lot areas. For access to spaces, item C, and this is also including hard-surfaced pavement or permeable paving materials that meet village requirements. Section E is where we've added our, our bicycle parking standards. So we included mopeds in the listing of modes of transportation, so we talk about bicycles, motorcycles, mopeds, and scooters. And then the broad new section, I am not going to read all of it, is related to bicycle parking. We had some conversation at the last meeting about what should be a definition of a bicycle rack, a bike lock, or lackable bike racks. We did, we did combine a couple of those numbers that were noted as, as duplicative and, and wanting to make sure that it was clear what we're talking about when we're talking about bicycle racks and bike facilities. So I'll just read this first one. Non-residential developments that provide parking for automobiles shall provide bike, bicycle parking facilities, e.g., bike racks, at a minimum ratio of one bicycle parking space for every ten automobile parking spaces. A bicycle parking facility is defined as a location designated for bicycle parking with an appropriate ground or wall-mounted rack, to which one or more bicycle frames can be securely attached with a user-supplied lock. So that, we felt addressed many of the questions and concerns about how we define this. We also, in our conversation, we, I don't believe there were many changes, if any, to that number two. Or number three, about the distance from a, a building entrance would be located within fifty feet. Bicycle parking facilities shall not displace any accessible parking spaces, so they can change regular vehicle spaces, but not ADA spaces. Let me see here. We also, in our conversation, you talked about motorcycle parking and that it's not required, but it says motorcycle parking if provided, so we added that clarifier. We also left mopeds and scooters may utilize parking designated for motorcycles if available. So that's another change that we made. So any other comments we can address?
That line added to the first paragraph of E, new development or redevelopment requires biking?
Yes.
FYI, in version five, it says, when site plan review is required, developments in business districts shall be required. I'm not sure, I vaguely remember the discussion, but that's where Todd landed. I don't think it makes a difference.
I don't remember adding that restriction, adding that requirement for site plan review. I think we were, so the question was raised, what is classified as new development? And so when we had that conversation, the commission had generally agreed that adding the, adding redevelopment would open it up to say, at, you know, whenever there is construction activity at a property, you can redevelop or you can make it new, these things would, would apply. And so naturally, you would, you would anticipate that it likely would come through site plan, but if there's, you know, there are opportunities, like we just went and said, if, if someone chooses to put bicycle parking in their lot, or they change one parking space to motorcycle parking, meeting those requirements, then they, they could do that without going through an approval process, so. What do you, you wanna keep this?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Any other changes to that section? And then 10-8-10 is about off-street loading spaces. This section did not, I think in our conversation about this, receive any changes from the proposed language. So we are using discretion as the, as the village for requiring off-street loading spaces for buildings with uses that typically receive deliveries. And they can receive deliveries at the front side or rear entrances of the primary building. It does give, we, you know, we have our existing standards for when those loading spaces are provided, we removed the word such from, from that language. We did add, you know, the materials by which an off-street loading space would be made of, hard-surface, all-weather, dustless material. There are limitations on the use, so you're not storing vehicles or working on, on vehicles in loading spaces, and then the number of spaces being provided based on the square footage of a, a building, of a property. Questions on that one?
I just, I just wonder, when it says at the discretion of the village, sort of, how, how, how vulnerable does that make the village, I guess, if it uses its discretion and says, no, you have to have a loading space? You're a four-story building and you can't say that, you know, your residents are, you know, gonna get all their UPS deliveries, you know, just by double parking in the street or wherever, I mean. I'm just wondering, is that at the discretion of the village, is that strong language that
Are you talking about the, the first existing
Loading space, yeah.
Sentence, the village may require off-street loading spaces?
Right, and at the discretion of the village, off-street loading spaces may not be required for buildings, is that
I think that's, I think it's okay, because, I, yes, the option for argument by the proposer is always there, but it's pretty clear in my mind, it's delivery vans, it's delivery trucks, it's the simple off, it's office deliveries, it's not a giant box truck.
Right, I guess I'm just thinking, if it's a large building and there's many units, and there's always a UPS truck outside of there, or always a FedEx truck, or, I mean, then I assume that the village would use its discretion to say you have to have
Correct.
A loading dock, even though you're not getting semi-truck loads, you're getting delivery van loads, you still have to provide an on, an on-street or an off-street loading space.
I think we're actually okay, because it says, at the discretion, discretion of the village, off-street loading may not be required, so the presumption is it's required
That is required, okay.
Unless you can prove otherwise, essentially, that you're just gonna have some Amazon deliveries.
Except that in the first sentence, it says the village may require off-street in the old language, so it may require and then it may not, if it's that type of, those type of delivery.
Right, and does the first sentence actually cover, like, the UPS or FedEx type of things? Cause they're, that's not really lucid in distribution of materials or merchandise.
You could, you could add, if you wanna strengthen this, you could, that first sentence, just say multi-axle trucks. Somehow indicate truck size, maybe that's not the best way, but
Multi-axle means three axles?
Generally, yes. Commissioner Pulteir helped me out with truck descriptions in our
Single unit?
Single unit trucks are larger, we could say that. Single unit trucks.
Single unit trucks.
That is, that is a defined vehicle.
Is a si, a single unit hyphenated?
I think, I don't remember.
I think it's two words, but isn't a UPS truck a single unit?
Not really. That's more of a delivery van. It's wheelbase-based, for repetition. A single unit's really a box truck.
So this is a definition for the smaller delivery trucks, is that what we're talking about?
No, for the first sentence
First sentence, thank you.
Delivery of material or merchandise by
Single unit.
Single unit trucks, or we could just say box trucks.
Or larger.
Or larger, yes.
Single unit or box?
Yeah.
What's the preference?
Single unit, I think is the word. Accepted.
So do we need to add a definition?
Not if these guys are saying it's commonly understood by people.
It's understood in the engineering community, so our viewers better know that.
So single unit or larger, right?
Okay.
Okay. Any other changes to that section?
Yeah, I think with that change, we're probably okay, is ever, Commissioner Miller, are you okay?
Sure, whatever you guys think is, is best. I was just envisioning, and I assume this, this 10-8-11, it, it applies to multi-residential buildings as well as non-residential, commercial use of it. So I'm, what I'm envisioning is saying, you know, sixteen, twenty-unit residential building, and, you know, it's getting different UPS deliveries, like, five times a day, and it's causing a lot of, I assume the village could probably do something in some way to address that.
It gets to item G, which defines the number of loading spaces, and then starts talking about the building types and the number of spaces. So I think, I think we're covered with that.
And it does give the village kind of flexibility to implement common sense in
Okay. Okay. The next two are related to parking lot landscaping, so the first is 10-9-5, talking about perimeter lot, lot landscaping, and 10-9-6 is talking about interior parking lot landscaping. And recall that this is just the addition of item or descriptor C, where pedestrian walkways along a perimeter or interior of parking lots would get, would want landscaping elements like shrubs or ground cover, some type of low-level planting, it's not limiting visibility, and that softens the hardscapes of the parking lots, it adds to your pervious surface area and creates these natural buffers. So when you're thinking about a parking lot, you know, your, your vehicle area isn't going right up to the sidewalk So when you're thinking about a parking lot, you know, your vehicle area isn't going right up to the sidewalk or the curb. It's creating some green space on the outside and on the interior of the parking lot. So creating a pedestrian refuge, for instance, if you were going through the interior of the parking lot. You have a sidewalk going through, and then you'd kind of buffer that with some landscaping. And likely, these types of things would, unless it's a very small area or improvement, would probably be part of a development site plan review of some kind. Any changes to that?
I still don't understand the first one.
Okay.
So if you have required landscaping around the edge of a parking lot, and then there's a sidewalk next to it, you have to landscape the sidewalk? I think this was a question that was going to go to Todd. I don't know if it did.
I'm not, I'm not describing this very well. It would be nice if we had a supplementary image to show where this landscaping would be required, right? So if it was to be on the perimeter, you know, is it on, which side of the sidewalk is that in? And is it a buffer between the lot and, most of the time, it'd end up being the right-of-way, but not necessarily. Where you'd have this stretch of green space. I'm trying to think of, because we'd have a buffer in plantings.
This seems to be implying a perimeter sidewalk that's not the public sidewalk. Right, that is what it seems to me to be. Although it doesn't really seem to be requiring it, it just says pedestrian walkways if they're there, as far as I can read. It doesn't say you have to have pedestrian walkways. But if you do, in addition to any public sidewalks, then you need to have landscaping. Landscape buffer. Which I guess.
So maybe the order of how this is phrased then is, is out of order? Where if it's, yeah, so basically, you'd be saying landscaping elements to help soften hardscapes of the parking lot or, you know, reducing pervious surfaces shall be provided adjacent to pedestrian walkways around the perimeter of the parking lot. You know, then it, then it creates a space or identifies a location for, for that. You're providing a buffer with landscaping between the parking lot surface and the sidewalk.
That's what I envision. I agree, I think that's what, but it doesn't seem to require that, so I don't know if we want to require it.
Okay.
Do we? I mean, I would guess in a lot of parking lots, we don't want to require it if they're small size, like the Sherwin-Williams that we just had in front of us. We wouldn't want, require them to also have a walkway.
Agreed.
So if we have this, and if it's a requirement, maybe it should apply to only sites over some size. Would the sidewalk along the face of the building be considered a perimeter sidewalk?
Possibly.
In which case?
I don't know what else you would call it.
Yeah. So in that case, you really would not want to require this.
I mean, the first section of this talks about where landscaping is required and how we treat that requirement. So adding this additional section doesn't necessarily add to that, those standards. In the perimeter parking lot, you know, interior may feel different.
Right, it says it's required, should be established along the edge of the parking lot.
Right. So is this subsection just repeating what the initial paragraph says?
Yeah, maybe that's true. Maybe it's not necessary, it's just repetitive.
Yeah, if it's repetitive and none of us fully understand it, I don't think it needs to be in there.
Okay.
I mean, I can understand the one, the second one, where it's a walkway within a parking lot. Like, let's say we get a Costco. If there is an established.
Okay. So we're just crossing off the one, so.
Well, I'm not sure I like that second one either, because if we look at the Sherwin-Williams, they have walkways. And we don't want, we wouldn't want, in a small lot, to require them to also have landscaping on those walkways. They have a walkway near their building, not a public walkway, not the public side. And then they have, it looks like, at least one crosswalk. And it just seems to me it might be excessive to require those areas to be landscaped in addition to being. That would require more space. So for a small lot like this, I don't know if that's practical. And it says shall, they shall provide landscaping along these pedestrian walkways.
We did, the provision A of that section also talks about planting islands or planting strips, you know, dispersed throughout the parking lot in a design. So if there was to be a slightly larger area, you know, the traffic pattern of that simple, you know, circulation is not conducive to that. But if you had a larger parking lot, you know, some school or place of assembly or whatever it is that we want to say, they may have these parking planting islands, you know, where it would apply.
Right. But then you'd also have to do that for the walkways. So it, I don't, yes, I don't understand why it was added in. I don't remember it really. And I'm not sure. We should say shall. We could either, my idea would either to only apply it to lots of a certain size or to say are encouraged, or something like that, like we do with some other parts of our zoning code.
Okay. So would we like to change it to encourage, or keep it shall, or remove it? I think were our three options.
Commissioners? I would be okay with removing it. Or changing it to encourage. I do think it's a bit of an onerous requirement. Commissioner Henigan?
I'd be inclined to leaving it, since it's already limited to parking lots that are at least 20 spaces, which is a sizable parking lot for Riverside.
Yeah.
I really don't have a problem leaving it as is.
Commissioner Marhol?
I can, I can support Commissioner Henigan's view.
And using shall?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller? No, that's a good point about the 20 spaces, but we had the Ames parking lot in front of us a couple of years ago. That was very tight. And if we had required them to have landscaped walkways, they couldn't have had the parking that they were allowed to have. They would have had even more limitations. Now, we could always give a variance as, you know, a relief from those requirements, but I don't know. I feel uncomfortable imposing yet another requirement on parking lot situations, which always seem like a jigsaw puzzle. And we have all the island requirements, so.
And it doesn't say how many shrubs, or how much ground cover, or how many plantings. So in a way, it's not enforceable.
And if you have a walkway that's going through a parking lot, you don't really want plantings, right? Because that would interfere with circulation. And if the walkway is next to a building, you don't really need plantings there. If it's right up against a building and it's, you know, four feet wide.
I really can't picture how this would apply unless we have that giant Costco parking lot with the defined sidewalk in it.
Right. In which case, you would want to break up impervious surfaces and paving deserts and stuff like that.
And I think if, in the event we do get that Costco-sized development, that will likely be coming to us for approval anyway. So we would have the opportunity to review it at that point.
Right.
So maybe it doesn't necessarily need to be in here.
I agree.
Okay.
Take away the shall and make it encouraged?
Sure.
That way.
Or just remove it?
Well, that way, when Costco comes in and we have the site plan review, then we've got something where we can say, why didn't you do this?
Or we could just add, and pedestrian walkways located at large retail. Large national retailers.
Okay, so it sounds like keep it, but change it shall to something else.
Okay. Okay. Very good. The last thing, the last one in this is, figure 12 in chapter nine for landscaping and screening requirements, is just a cleaned-up version of this with cleaned-up text. So I wanted to ensure that that got into this version.
Is there a reason this graphic isn't as clean as the others?
I don't know if it's just the trees themselves.
All the lines are fuzzy.
It's all, it looks like a dot matrix printer printed it.
Maybe it's the size that it's blown up to. But yeah, we can, we can see if the, the general premise of the explanations in here would be what we see, but we can look for a cleaner.
And also, didn't we make the drive lane 22 feet?
So actually, I had, I had asked about the, let me find this very quickly. I did ask a question of our engineer about whether 22 feet is a minimum when it meets certain criteria would be appropriate. And their response was that, yeah, I'll just read it. "The minimum design standards adopted by the industry are byproducts of engineering studies, which take many factors into account, including turning radius, visibility, vehicle dimensions, et cetera. One could argue that there's a factor of safety involved that may not always be necessary. But the situation would need to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis before reductions are approved. If the village were to adopt a blanket policy that reduces these minimums, it may open itself to additional liability risks. That being said, there's no hard and fast rule that prohibits the village from creating its own design standards." So it's, it sounds like they are less inclined to say that reducing it from 24 feet from the industry standard is a great idea, but it certainly could be adopted on a case-by-case basis. And it also could still be discussed if that were the wish of the commission.
And I'm not arguing with you.
Yeah.
Ashley, Assistant Village Manager.
Okay.
That's canned language that is meant to protect them from liability. I'm not pleased about that response.
Okay.
We know that current street design does allow for 11-foot lanes. So to, for them to argue that 12-foot lanes, which is essentially what they're doing is the minimum, is they're talking out of both sides of their mouth. They can go back and reassess that, as far as I'm concerned. And yes, I'm taking a hard stand on it.
Okay. Feedback taken.
I agree, we should continue to push for the 22 feet. Unless we had that Costco, in which case, probably empty parking spaces, so it would be a little bit more easy to maneuver. But I don't remember at this point where it would be in the code.
It was specific to parking. And one of the arguments, sorry, and I'm going to continue with this. One of the arguments for narrower lanes is that it actually does encourage safety because it ends up reducing people's speeds, because they don't think they have a freeway that they can drive down. So.
Yes, yeah.
Again, not thrilled with their response.
So the record could show that there are no interested parties here to speak in support or objection. Has the village received anything?
We have not.
Shut. Is there a motion to continue or close the public hearing?
So moved?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, to close the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call, please. Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Palteer?
Aye.
Commissioner Henigan?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Okay, additional conversation, discussion before we go to the standards? Okay. So for text amendments, we have, we don't have to meet all of these standards, but we'll discuss them. A, the extent to which the proposed amendment promotes the public health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general welfare of the village. I think we're enhancing that. The relative gain to the public as compared to the hardship imposed upon the applicant. Consistency of the proposed amendment with village plans?
Yes.
Yes.
Consistency of the proposed amendment with intent and general regulations of the zoning ordinance?
Absolutely.
Whether the amendment corrects an error or omission, adds clarification to existing requirements, or reflects a change in policy?
Policy change.
Benefits the residents of the village as a whole and not just the applicant, property owners, neighbors, or other special interest groups. And the extent to which the proposed use would be in the public interest and would not serve solely the interests of the applicant.
Correct.
Hold on, two more. Whether the proposed amendment provides a more workable way to achieve the intent and purposes of the zoning ordinance and village plans?
We believe so, yes.
Oh, another one snuck in there. The extent to which the proposed amendment creates nonconformities. There'll be legal nonconforming.
We don't believe so.
And then finally, the extent to which the proposed amendment is consistent with the overall structure and organization of the zoning ordinance.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Would somebody like to make a motion to recommend approval of these amendments with the exception of two?
10-5-4 and 10-7-3?
Two items?
Motion to recommend.
And with the changes, the amendments made by.
Motion to recommend with the pullouts and the changes recommended and the changes we discussed.
Is there a second?
Thank you.
Please call the roll. Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Palteer?
Aye.
Commissioner Henigan?
Aye.
And chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Cut. We're getting there.
Yeah.
Next up is public hearing, PZ 22-06, to consider proposed text amendments, which include changes affecting various sections of the Riverside zoning ordinance pertaining to deck height, including but not limited to 10-7-3D accessory structures and uses. The village of Riverside is the petitioner. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved. Or second?
You can second. Please call the roll.
Okay. Yes, 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 yes.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Palteer?
Aye.
Commissioner Henigan?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Motion carries. Public, a public notice was published in The Landmark on June 1, 2022, and will be marked as an exhibit. The remaining application materials as a second exhibit. Is there a motion to accept these exhibits into the record?
So moves.
Is there? Please call the roll.
We've got Commissioner Marhol.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Palteer?
Aye.
Commissioner Henigan?
Aye.
Chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'll just have you know it was Attorney Morris' suggestion for us to do this this way.
Okay. Well, we, I will very briefly explain that I believe. that I believe many of you have been present for at least one of the two requests for a variance to a deck more than four feet above the established grade. And so as such, when that happens, we historically have brought forward a consideration to make an adjustment to the code, because we're finding more and more that it's not limited to just those two properties that have requested this. There is additional construction factors and other properties that we're identifying as nonconforming with decks above four feet in grade. And so what we've provided is, and we also, I'll note that there's no construction reason for, as long as it meets other building codes for that height maximum of four feet. And we've also done research on other comparable communities and none of which have some type of regulation similar to ours. They just regulate based on building code, for the most part, or are silent on the matter. So what we've proposed is a relatively simple adjustment to section 10-7-3D accessory structures and uses on decks. The change is to part two of that section. And the proposed language, and you may wordsmith this if you like, but to get at what we desire, is two. Decks shall be limited to the first floor of the primary structure. That would be how the new code would read. We would be removing the section that says shall not be raised more than four feet above the established grade. So if there are adjustments you'd like to make or recommendations to that language, I'm all ears.
This is, I don't want to make a big deal of this, but why is it primary structure and not principal building? Because principal building is a defined term.
The, that is preferable, that we would have and use the defined term.
That we would change it to principal building?
Yeah, we can.
We can do that, okay. You'd take no exception to that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. That was the goal, certainly. We can use principal building.
My suggestion would also be to say that a deck shall not be higher than the elevation of the first floor of the primary building. That's what I wrote down?
Yes.
That, yes, and I was aiming the same, but I think you phrased it better than I was going to.
Higher? Okay, so can you please repeat that one more time?
Decks shall not be higher than the elevation of the first floor.
Okay.
Of the principal building.
Of the principal building.
So when we say that, the deck is the surface, the platform? Is that the... The floor. Floor, not any walls or... Of the deck?
Well, the deck is the deck and the railings are the railings. So I think that deck works.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll note that there are no objectors or interested parties in the audience. Did we receive any comments?
We have not received any comments.
Okay. Are we ready to close this public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Please call the roll. Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Palatier?
Aye.
Commissioner Hennigan?
Aye.
And chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Thank you. Attorney Morris, do I need to read the standards again for a text amendment? Would you like me to read the standards again for a text amendment?
I am okay if you don't.
All right.
As long as everyone is in general consensus that they have been met. Having heard them so recently.
I can be in general consensus.
Yes.
Agreed.
Would somebody like to make a motion to... A motion?
Motion to approve the amendment as revised.
Recommend approval.
Yes, thank you.
Second. Any further discussion? And please call the roll.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Palatier?
Aye.
Commissioner Hennigan?
Aye.
And chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Motion carries. I will note that your clerk certificate on page 63 of the original has 2021 and Kathy Haley, so just...
The ghost is still there. So close. Okay.
Is that at the end?
I'm sorry?
On the version you're looking at, is that the end, at the end of the document?
It's after...
I'm only asking because mine does not.
Huh. Let's see here.
Yours doesn't, yours has something else.
Mine is blank.
Okay.
Mine just says...
Okay.
No, no, no.
Clerk's certificate, I see. Page 63.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll make that adjustment.
Next up, could be old business, discussing electric vehicle parking, or we can postpone it.
Well, I'm not going to be at the next meeting, and I had a fair number of recommendations for this, actually, or questions, which I'm happy to just put in an email if everyone would rather that, and it can be taken up when I'm not here at the next meeting.
I think we started getting tired at nine. So, and I think at the next time we discuss this, maybe there'll be proposed language, which will hopefully address your concerns.
Yes, right, okay.
Yes, there's additional, a little bit of additional research that I did as staff to, you know, define whether there's additional definitions that would be helpful or other language that would align with the principles of exactly what we're going for, but address the different aspects. And so I would provide the examples to the commission with that discussion at our next meeting. And of course, can do that in preparation and based on Commissioner Miller's feedback or questions.
So you'd be altering the proposed text here, or not?
Potentially.
We hope so.
Okay, well, I'm happy to just, I'll just send an email to you, Ms. Monroe, and I can copy you, chairperson Mateo.
Yes.
So our next meeting is scheduled for July 27. If you others know that they're not going to be here, please let us know.
Yes.
And with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
A second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Marhol?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Palatier?
Aye.
Commissioner Hennigan?
Aye.
And chairperson Mateo?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone, yet again. This is really outstanding work, and I look forward to some month when we don't have to meet, as is Riverside TV. Have a good night.